Hear us in our Zoom meeting, correct?
So I gotta get that Google Doc open.
I don't know, let me, let me pull up YouTube and make sure.
I can hear.
Can you hear us on YouTube?
Yeah, on OBS, you have to cut the, cut the mic on OBS.
We gotta cut it.
Trick?
Okay, thank you, Captain.
Trick?
Do you hear me on YouTube? Okay, thank you, Captain.
I can't tell, because I have all my other... Do a sound check on, for the YouTube. There's a feedback loop, you need to turn your...
Lindsay, I have one quick question for you.
Yes, we are live.
Closed session, it starts, this meeting is being livestreamed live, is that you or is that me?
Mr. Mayor, that would be you speaking for that section, and then I'm waiting to get a verbal cue, I think we're good, give me one moment.
Mr. Mayor, that would be you speaking.
We're ready.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, April 6, 2020. I request the city clerk to provide a roll call.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember McCullough.
Present.
Mayor Phillips.
Present.
There, there was no closed session, and therefore, I'll cite, this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube and to our website, and we have community members attending via conference call on the following phone number, 669-900-9128, and the meeting ID number is 121-912-389. Invite the city clerk to address and make comments with regard to this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're attending this meeting by conference call and wish to provide public comment, please virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone. If you virtually raised your hand, you will receive a notification that you have been unmuted when it is your turn to speak for two minutes. If you were calling in and watching, if you were calling in and watching on YouTube, please turn your volume down on YouTube to limit any feedback when you speak. If you were attending the meeting via YouTube, please submit public comments to the live chat, and let us know if you want your comments read by writing "public comment" prior to your message and introduce yourself by your name. If you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the city council and published to our website. Is there anyone on the conference call that wishes to provide public comment on a topic that is not on the agenda? If so, please press star nine. While I wait for participants to press star nine, I will also request public comments be submitted through YouTube live chat. And it looks like we do have two callers who wish to provide public comments over the telephone, I will unmute the first, who is Joan.
Yes, Emma. Hello, am I on?
You are.
Thank you. I'm calling to urge the San Rafael Council to pass an emergency ordinance to stop the deployment of 5G during this quarantine. There have been witnesses to an aggressive expansion of failure antenna installations in communities across the country. Telecom companies are using COVID-19 emergency as cover to expand unsupervised deployment of harmful wireless infrastructure. Local authorities have the emergency powers to stop this. So once again, I won't belabor it, but I am urging you to please pass an emergency ordinance to stop the deployment of 5G during the quarantine. I am urging you... Pardon me?
Sorry, keep going.
No, that's, especially, they're doing it around the schools, people have seen this, and it's just not right. And I think that's all I need to say, I don't know how to, what I do next on this phone call thing.
That's perfect, that's, that's your time, I appreciate you calling in.
And let me just, let me just clarify, a public comment during this period and not being an agenda item, we are not permitted to, to take position or act upon the comments, but we certainly appreciate the input from the community for possible consideration at a later date, but thank you for providing your comment.
Thank you.
Jillanne, I see you raised your hand, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. I'm having trouble hearing you. I think that's an accident, she's here for CDDG. Okay, and that is all of our teleconference informa-, or public comments, and now, we did receive public comments from Carolyn Leonard, Honorable Mayor and Council, "Do not let the 5G wolf in sheep's clothing into the fold on your watch." "You do not want to rely upon 1996 health impacts research now being, now being misused. I believe the current science, and so does the entire nation of Switzerland." Dr. Moskowitz of UCB posted April 1st update on 5G studies, he notes, "Currently, no peer-reviewed empirical studies of the biologic or health effects from exposure to 5G radiation have been published. Hence, those who claim that 5G is safe because it complies with radio frequency exposure guidelines are engaging in sophistry. Stephen Bingham, "Good evening, members of the city council, I am Stephen Bingham from Terre Linda. Thank you for all you're doing during this difficult time. I wanted to bring to your attention the failure of many people in Terre Linda to wear any face covering while in grocery stores or other essential services buildings. While there is no state or local order yet requiring face coverings, I think local law enforcement should remind people that the scientific community is now in agreement that face coverings protect others from exposure to the virus, from asymptomatic folks who don't know they are carrying..." is now in agreement that face coverings protect others from exposure to the virus from asymptomatic folks who don't know they are carriers of COVID-19. All persons inside a store, both customers and workers, should be strongly encouraged to wear coverings. Perhaps the city council could even consider directing store personnel to refuse entry to anyone without face coverings. Sky Collins. Thank you for your hard work on the council and for organizing the meetings in this present emergency. I would like to propose two programs to ensure that there that we are even better at meeting our next challenge. First, I would like to propose the development of a fund for the city to assist small businesses in paying their employees in times of hardship. This could come from a tax on Amazon deliveries. Second, every resident benefiting is benefiting from the hard work of the essential workers at our grocery stores and mailrooms. Is there a way that we as a city can ensure that they have personal protective equipment? Could we set up a fund to have our own stockpile in the future? Thank you for your time. And that concludes public comment.
And again, thanks for those that have provided the comments and with regard to the first point, just very briefly, since it's not on the agenda, as I mentioned, we can't address these items specifically. But I can assure you that our staff and presumably we are certainly aware cognizant of the 5G matter and have not put it behind us. I think that for Bingham raises a good point with regard to facial coverage at this time. It seems like it's highly advised. And therefore take that into consideration as a community. And with regard to funding, we are assisting our small businesses very shortly through funds we've raised thus far. Perhaps more could be done in that area. And so certainly appreciate the the comment during the open time. And with that, I'll now turn to the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, actually, there is one more comment we received on YouTube, and I would like to give everyone one more chance. I did hear there was a waiting room on our on our Zoom call.
Sure, thank you.
Is there anyone else on the telephone who would like to provide public comment on a topic that is not on this evening's agenda? If so, please press star nine. Seeing none. I would like to give one second for our YouTube comments. It looks like we have one. It says, public comment, we need guidance for essential retail workers in regard to the new emergency declaration. Many stores are not doing an admirable job and many others are not. Many stores are doing an admirable job and many others are not. Some stores are limiting capacity, not enforcing or not limiting capacity, not enforcing the six foot rule, not providing their staff with any PPE or even suggestions on how to keep themselves safe. I would like the council to request the police department do random spot checks and begin handing out citations. And that concludes our public comment period.
And again, I'll thank the public for the comment and the observation. It certainly is helpful to have 60,000 times two eyes out there helping us through this difficult time. And I'm sure that the city manager will take into account particularly the last comment. And with that, let's turn to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give an update during my city manager report time tonight on the coronavirus. And I'm going to take just a few more minutes than usual due to the importance of this topic. We are beginning our fourth week operating the city's Emergency Operations Center, which is also known as an EOC, where the city morphs into a disaster response organization in addition to maintaining certain ongoing functions like city council meetings. I'm going to provide a general update of some recent issues. The most recent information I have from county public health from Marin County is that we have over 140 tested positive. That means those that have that have had tests taken and they turned out positive coronavirus cases, 17 hospitalizations and nine fatalities. The county EOC has been suggesting that the total positive cases, including all those that haven't been tested that could be positive, could be more realistically in the 1% to 1% to 2% range of our overall population. The hospitals and the health department continue to plan for the expected surge of patients picking up increasingly through this month. As the council knows, we've been running a virtual EOC, or again, Emergency Operations Center, so that we can maintain social distancing. We're in regular contact with the county of Marin EOC, which is where Health and Human Services is located and the county public health officer. I wanted to give just a quick idea of the type of communication going on so that the community knows kind of the different levels of communication happening on this on this emergency. The city of San Rafael EOC has multiple video calls throughout the day with the various EOC sections. We can coordinate. And those sections are operations, which are actions in the field that we're taking, planning, which is getting ready for what's next, both the next day or weeks ahead. Logistics, which is getting the right resources out to the right places. And finance, which is tracking the costs and making sure all our documentation is according to Cal, OES, and FEMA needs. So we've been regularly communicating with those sections throughout the city. And we also have regular leadership calls for all of our managers and directors to hear the latest as not everyone is in the EOC. We keep employees informed through their departments and also through citywide email communications, either daily or every few days, depending on the information need. We have regular conference calls with all of the other city and town managers throughout Marin County. And one of the goals of that is to try to maintain consistency where possible to reduce community confusion. So we're trying to coordinate things like messaging around different sort of park implications or restricting vehicular access to parks and that sort of thing so that we have similar messaging throughout the county. And then perhaps most importantly, there's regular county operational area calls. And that's where we communicate directly with the county EOC, the county health officer, Marin County Office of Education, schools, other cities and towns, special districts, fire districts, et cetera. So there's a lot of multi-agency coordination happening every single day, which is great. Now for some of the updates of things going on in the city's EOC. We've started what will be a series of regular videos featuring the mayor to provide updates on the coronavirus and city actions and respond to submitted questions that he's been receiving. The first edition went out on Friday and the mayor was joined by Supervisor Damon Connolly. And then from San Rafael Kaiser Permanente, Pat Kendall and Dr. Kumar and me. The video has just been out a few days and it's had over 1,000 views already. So we think that that's a good start. And it seems to be a way that's that's helpful for our community to receive updates. So the idea is to continue to follow up with briefer messages from the mayor now that we've got the ball started and focus a little bit more on answering frequently asked questions that people have submitted and providing updates on what's going on in San Rafael. By the way, when it comes to frequently asked questions, the the county's website, which I'll give out in a second. They their frequently asked question webpage, it grows regularly. And it's really a fantastic resource if our community hasn't seen it yet. That really gets down into the weeds of almost every type of question that you could possibly have. In the recent video that I was just mentioning, I used my time to highlight the role of city employees. And in particular, I wanted to highlight our amazing paramedics, police officers and firefighters who are on the street every day protecting our community and helping everyone in need. So I wanted to offer sincere appreciation to our first responders, and I know our community feels the same. Our EOC remains busy with the sorts of things that you've seen through our public communication. So I won't go into detail here, but with the Emergency Childcare Centers, food distribution, assistance to those experiencing homelessness and other vulnerable populations, neighbor to neighbor and direct outreach, working with our partners in the expansion of Wi-Fi in underserved areas. And more work is being done in that area to get providers to add more connection sites and to keep them free longer. Our economic development staff is teaming up with San Rafael's Chamber of Commerce, the BID, and Small Business Development Center as they're providing direct business support with all the very complicated federal stimulus programs available now to help small business owners. So so our staff is helping directly working with businesses and our partners to try to demystify a lot of that information. And then in the works, we have the San Rafael Small Business COVID-19 Fund, which the mayor may want to add his thoughts to when I finish my report, which is going to be a fund that's that's developing right now to directly assist San Rafael small businesses. And I just wanted to add that we are so fortunate to have such a great partnership with the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce and the Business Improvement District on this particular effort. They've been absolutely amazing and it's a great partnership with the city. As I'm sure our community has all seen by now, the new shelter order was updated last week. It caused us to make a number of changes at the city in terms of like the types of business building inspections that we're doing. Some of them do continue on and the types of signage we have in public parks and open space and our messaging to the community. From a financial standpoint, the city has a finance committee, which is Mayor Phillips and Councilmember Gamblin, who's met and will continue to meet regarding the economic impact of the pandemic on our budget. And we're certainly going to have a lot more on that topic to come in the coming months. Lastly, our public updates and our messaging has been in lots of different formats like social media, e-news, blasts, videos that explain various parts of the shelter order. And we've been coordinating through the EOC, both my snapshot e-newsletter that comes out on the Thursday before every city council meeting, and also the San Rafael is Resilient e-newsletter that's been daily or every other day recently. So there's a lot of communication going out from the city. And we're trying to share city messages and other important things that are coming through the county EOC and our other partners that we have. And we've been getting great feedback from our community about the usefulness of those communications. So still the best place for up to date information on is is the county and the city's specific websites on this topic. For the county, it's coronavirus.marinhhs.org. So that's Marin, it would be Health and Human Services, but coronavirus.marinhhs.org. And that's where you'll find the FAQs that now is over 150 questions that they have there and also the the most recent information on data. And then the city site is cityofsanrefel.org/coronavirus. So our community can stay tuned to those sites to get the best local information. I just wanted to thank everyone again in our community for beating the the shelter in place order. It really is making a difference, although we've got to continue to keep it up and continue to improve our the shelter in place in order to flatten the curve and have a bigger impact on this on the pandemic. So that concludes my report and thank you. Turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for that complete report. I know it's on the community's mind, obviously. And I think you've done an outstanding job of summarizing all the the good work that you've done along with our staff and and certainly many others within our community because this is a critical time for for all of us. We did have, I think, a rather interesting dialogue last Friday on the status and tried to bring together the components I felt the community might be most interested in, starting with the county. What is a county doing? And Supervisor Damon Connolly joined us to talk about what the county has been doing. I would suggest that you look at their website because it's considerable, not the least of which is their most recent statement as to what we are as a community to do in our response and in preparation to to best fight the COVID virus. It's under their their code. So you'll see that. Second, invited the hospitals because of obviously particularly with, you know, if you've been watching the news, New York and their issues. My curiosity was how well prepared are our hospitals? And I say plural because I've invited had invited Kaiser since they're located in San Rafael, but also somewhat knowledgeable with regard to the other locations. That is Marin Healthcare and Sutter. And we got a pretty good rundown as to where they stand. And and then Jim summarized where we stand with regard to community services that the city provides. Did an outstanding job there. I talked a little bit about the fund we're putting together to help many of our struggling businesses. We all know that they've been impacted significantly. And we're hoping that this will bridge the gap between this period of time where it's really difficult with no revenues coming in or it's and that's certainly not what they would normally expect. But then also if the the Fed funds the 350 billion, which sounds like a lot of money. But I'm going to be curious and a little bit concerned about how much of that actually filters down to our most local businesses that our community certainly supports and reaps the benefit from their operation, which is not in place right now. So we we talked a little bit about that. So those those four things in particular came up last week and tend to each Friday. Touch on some of the key points that are raised by our community members have received, I don't know, dozen letters, I guess, at this point, asking about various aspects of of the order that's been issued by the county and just generally speaking, how do we best address the issues before us as a community during this this difficult period? Which is unknown at this time. How long it'll last, we don't know. I'm not sure that anyone does. But it'll come to an end at some point in time. But between now and then, how do we best address the the issues that come before us every day? So that's our our plan to keep the community brised to where we're at, where we're going and what the best course of action for us as individuals to take to help further, as Jim mentioned, and certainly others, flattening the curve, which is our best defense at this point in time, it seems. That is prior to any vaccinations or other other medications we might take. So it is keeping in somewhat isolation, no closer than six feet apart and and trying to be on our best behavior with regard to the concern that we're all faced with. So thank you, Jim, for your very complete report. And with that, let's move on now to the agenda item under consent calendar. And I'll ask if there are any public comments with regard to the consent items, which will be covered with a single motion unless someone asks for an item to be held. So any public comments at this point?
If you are participating by conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine. And while I wait for participants to press star nine, I will also request public comments be submitted through YouTube live chat. And this is for items that are currently on the consent calendar. I will go ahead and mute your unmute you. You'll receive a notification that you've been unmuted.
Okay, this is good evening. I'm Carolyn PD, Director of Fair Housing Advocates. May I speak?
You may.
Okay. I wanted to address the concerns that led to the proposed reduction of the city's CDBG funding allocation for our agencies, agency for the next two years, which would result in more than 10% reduction for us in our Marin County funding. We've worked with thousands of San Rafael residents over the years and we've provided fair housing counseling and enforcement and representing clients from the administrative complaint process with HUD. We investigate and reinforce client complaints to help gather evidence of housing discrimination using trained testers. Sometimes we file complaints or lawsuits to lend strength to a client's case or bring about changes in discriminatory housing policies of housing providers. So we offer the housing education also to housing providers in the larger community. We provide foreclosure protection and pre-purchase services to access housing or keep vulnerable populations housed. And we assist jurisdictions on how to fulfill HUD's mandate to affirmably further fair housing by giving guidance on proposed and in place rules, giving significant input into the analysis of impediments and training CDBG and home applicants and recipients on how to conduct affirmative marketing. I heard the concern that the city shouldn't pay more than a fair share. And though we submitted the percentage of total clients served in the city in our application, that's not reflective of our work and resources that we put into their housing services to San Rafael residents. I just wanted to mention that of all the jurisdictions we serve in the counties of Marin, Shenala and Solano, we have filed the greatest number of agency discrimination complaints and the greatest number of cases overall originating in the city of San Rafael. Our enforcement work on those complaints took significant agency resources and many months of work, which resulted in favorable outcomes for clients. We negotiated policy changes, which has a positive effect on many, many more tenants present and future at all the properties the housing provider owns and manages. That doesn't get figured into the 42%. So I respectfully would suggest and hope you will consider reinstating our funding at the suggested 31,500 allocations for the city.
Is there anyone else on the conference call who wishes to speak on an item on the consent calendar? Please press star nine. You've been unmuted.
Good evening. Oh, I'm sorry. If everyone can hear me okay. My name is Casey F. I'm the supervising attorney at Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California. And I echo everything our executive director Carolyn PD just everything our Executive Director Carolyn T D just said. And I also have some additional comments regarding concerns of our funding's reduced. So first, new legislation has increased our organization's fair housing education and enforcement work since 2019. New housing legislation has come into effect, both San Rafael local laws, such as Just Cause Per Ejection and Source of Income Protection, as well as California's fair housing laws, such as AB 686, and most recently FB 329, which prohibits source of income discrimination throughout the state. We monitor price lists and other ads for discriminatory language and anticipate an increase in the number of complaints and resulting enforcement efforts this year and next, requiring additional resources to respond, investigate, intervene, and bring complaints. And next, the current pandemic has put additional pressure on our staff and resources. Our staff continues to operate remotely despite numerous logistical and personal difficulties, assisting clients through phone and email. And it's incredible what we as an agency continue to accomplish. As you can imagine, the cost of doing business, particularly putting remote technology into place, continues to rise. And we've received a number of calls from residents about their housing related to COVID-19. We fear these calls will continue to rise over the coming weeks and months. We remain in touch with our coalitions and networks to stay on top of the latest in changing legislation so that we can provide accurate, up-to-date resources to our clients. And last, decreased funding will make it difficult to retain competent staff, particularly legal staff. We retain a highly competent staff, including a bilingual intake counselor, bilingual housing counselor, staff attorneys, and a supervising attorney. And it's difficult to retain such competent employees. Legal aid agencies continue to advertise highly paid positions through services funding that we cannot access. And as you can imagine, it's tough to retain staff even if we maintain level funding, let alone if funding decreased. Last, I would just like to invite you to our Fair Housing Conference Series. There are three starting Monday morning. I know my time is up, but if you're interested, please check out our website at fairhousingmorcal.org, and we hope you'll join us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And is there anyone else on the telephone who wishes to speak? If so, please press star nine. Seeing none, I'll move to YouTube comments, and there are no YouTube comments. And I would like to add that we did receive correspondence in advance of this evening's meeting, which we published to the agenda and forwarded to the city council in advance of the meeting.
And thank you very much. I'll ask if anyone wishes to have item four D held.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. I just saw a hand go up that wasn't up before. Is it okay if we take that public comment?
Say again, I'm sorry.
There was just a hand that was raised, a telephone call, a person that would like to provide public comment.
Please do.
One moment.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Hello, yes, my name is Jelani Dotson, Project Manager with Bridge Housing, and I'd like to speak on behalf of Center Town Project. And just wanted to express our gratitude for the opportunity to apply for Community Development Black Grant resources to rehabilitate Center Town Apartments Project. The project was originally built 30 years ago, and needs major exterior and building systems improvements. The property currently lacks operational space and has water intrusion and building system issues related to the end of their useful life. Proposed improvements include repair and replacement of exterior waterproofing, mechanical plumbing, and electrical systems, and providing standard office and common area space for the supportable community. Interior work will include TCAC, required accessibility upgrades, and plumbing, mechanical, and electrical fixture replacements to meet town 24 requirements. These improvements will not only extend the life of much-needed affordable housing, but will also make the building more energy efficient. Center Town Apartments is located within downtown San Rafael, just blocks from the main downtown corridor. In addition to sustaining much-needed low-income workforce housing, this great location provides important access to nearby jobs, transportation, and retail for those families who need it most. Although affordability limits are regulated at 50 to 60% AMI, the average household income of all existing households is less than 33% AMI. This makes it even more important to rehabilitate Center Town Apartments to invigorate this section of downtown and improve the quality of life for its residents. We appreciate the opportunity to make this comment. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask once again, does anyone wish to have any of the items held before we go to consent? And just a very brief comment, CDBG has gone through a considerable process, including the attendance of Councilmember Gamblin. So this has been before us previously, and it's being returned because we had an issue that we wanted to address, which has been addressed. I see no one that wishes to have an item held, so therefore, I'll ask for a motion with regard to the consent items.
I move that we approve the consent items.
Second.
Move in second, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, and the matter of Terry is five zero, but thank you for the comments. And now turn to, let's see, where we turn to, the public hearing, which is, what is it, 4A, 5A? Well, the public hearing with regard to 190 Mill Street, and I'll ask for a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and City Council Members. This is Paul Jensen, Community Development Director, and I'm reporting from the third floor, Community Development Department. I would like to start with some brief introductory comments, and then we will have Ally Judasey, our Principal Planner, provide you with a more detailed presentation. For the past two years, Community Development Staff has been working with Homeward Bound on this project that's before you this evening, and the timing could not be better. First of all, this project would address the greatest need in our housing stock, which is housing for the extremely low income, which we have the least of in our community. Secondly, this project has provided us an opportunity to pilot a buy-right development process that we are developing for affordable housing projects. It has allowed us to test this process and vet thoughts and needs for developing what we call objective review standards, which are required to be adopted by the state. The state requires us to adopt them. Lastly, I want to mention that the timing is critical. Homeward Bound is facing deadlines for financing and grant applications, which require confirmation of local jurisdiction approval. So the opportunity to present this project tonight is timely and greatly appreciated. And at this point, I will turn it over to Ally for a complete presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. The, let's see. So the project before you is 190 Mill Street, as was the introduction. I'm going to go through and identify the requested entitlements, and then provide a little bit more detail on the coming slides, and then proceed with the action that is being requested of you tonight. So the applicant is requesting the following entitlements. A general plan amendment that would reclassify the project site of 190 Mill Street from a light industrial office to a high-density residential, so LIO to HDR. A zoning map amendment that would reclassify the property from CCIO, or Core Canal Industrial Office, to an HR1, which is a corresponding high-density residential designation. A use permit to allow the expansion of the emergency shelter that's already existing at the project site. The applicant's also requesting concessions to height and lot coverage, and a fee waiver for planning and building permit fees. And with the requested entitlements, the applicant would then be able to develop the site with a building that would accommodate the 60-bed emergency shelter and 32 supportive housing units to accommodate populations within the extremely low-income category, as Paul was mentioning. So the general plan amendment would essentially modify the existing property boundary. What you see here in orange is a high-density residential designation along Canal Street, and the applicant is proposing to have that boundary line approved, modified, to approve the modification, approved to accommodate a high-density residential designation to that property. So again, from light industrial office to a high-density residential. And then, in addition to that, a zoning map amendment would allow the property boundary, or the high-density residential boundary, to be modified to accommodate, to encompass the entire site. So basically, a shift, again, similar to the general plan amendment. The applicant's also requesting a use permit to allow expansion of the emergency shelter. A use permit is required currently for emergency shelters within the CCIO, but it is also required within the high-density residential districts. Emergency shelters are subject to objective performance standards that have been adopted by the city. They exist within our zoning code, and they would be applied to the project site. And typically, we would measure, we would require that the applicant demonstrate compliance with those performance standards at the time they submit a building permit application. So the requested use permit would allow, again, expansion of the existing number of beds that are accommodated at the project site. Currently, there's approximately 45 to 55 beds that are accommodated. The use permit would allow expansion of that to up to 60 emergency shelter beds. And then, in addition to that, the applicant is requesting a concession to height and lot coverage. Currently, the height limit to this property is 36 feet. The applicant is requesting a 48-foot height, and this would be to accommodate that additional level of supportive housing. The applicant is also proposing a lock, or requesting lock coverage concession to allow the lot coverage to go from 60% to 66% to accommodate all the elements of the project. And with the approval of the requested entitlements, the applicant then would be able to develop the project with a buy right for four-story building that would accommodate the 60-bed emergency shelter and the 32 single-room occupancy supportive housing units, with the ground level being reserved for parking. Level two is where the 60-bed emergency shelter would be located, and then level three and four would be where the 32 units would be located, with 16 units on each level. And this gives you an impression of what that building would look like, with some context with the existing development surrounding the building. You can see a multi-family residential building to the left of this slide. That's an existing building now. So along with the requested entitlements, the applicant is requesting a waiver of planning and building fees. The planning fee waiver would be offset by SB2, by an SB2 grant that was given to the city. The project qualifies for a fee waiver pursuant to Resolution 11025, because it is an affordable housing project, providing supportive housing to extremely low-income category population. The total amount of the planning fee waiver would be offset by grant money that was received by the city in 2019 as part of the SB2, what's called the Planning Grants Program. This grant money set aside money to adapt planning documents to streamline the development of affordable housing projects. This project was identified as a buy-right pilot project as part of that grant request. So therefore, the grant funding is intended to offset the fiscal impact of the planning fee waiver that is being requested by the applicant tonight. In terms of the building permit fee waiver, it is too early to provide a good evaluation of what that building permit fee waiver might look like. So staff is not asking for the city council to make, take action on that tonight. The building permit fees are determined at the time a building permit is submitted, and staff needs to be able to evaluate what that impact might be. In addition, the applicant is intending to apply for funding from our Affordable Housing Fund, and, you know, we don't know what that might look like, what their ultimate gap might be. And so, once we get to that point, which is typically at a later date, we'll be able to kind of get, have a better understanding what the building permit fee waiver might look like, and we'll be able to give you a better evaluation for yours, council to consider. And so the resolution that is before you tonight is only related to the planning fee. So the application was reviewed by the Planning Commission on February 25th, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the requested entitlements, finding that the project was unnecessary in terms of providing supportive housing. They did, at that time, direct planning staff to coordinate with public work staff to evaluate the needs, any pedestrian safety needs. Those were some of the comments that were submitted at the time. Staff has done that coordination. The Department of Public Works staff have identified ways that pedestrian safety might be addressed. Typically, with a planning, with a project that is submitted as part of a building permit application, we evaluate the required frontage improvements, and those would be done at the time of building permit submission. So Department of Public Works feels confident and comfortable that we would be able to evaluate pedestrian safety at that time. In addition, the planning, or the Department of Public Works staff identified some ongoing pedestrian improvement projects that are ongoing within the canal area. So staff did receive a number of comments that were forwarded to you, your commission, your city council. There were some comments in support of the project and some comments in opposition of the project. In terms of the comments in support of the project, we are hearing the need for this type of project to accommodate emergency shelter beds, as well as provide supportive housing for certain populations in need of this type of housing. In terms of comments in opposition of the project, we heard primarily the need to address pedestrian safety along Harbor and Mill, but also concerns about maintenance of the site and its surroundings. The applicant will be required to submit a management plan that addresses security and maintenance of the site. So staff feels comfortable that those, the comments that were submitted can be addressed as part of the ongoing operations of the project. So in terms of the city council's recommended actions, this is a recommendation by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended adoption of a resolution approving the initial study mitigated negative declaration, and that was an environmental document that was prepared for this project. They also recommended adoption of a resolution approving the general plan amendment that is being requested by the applicant. Recommendation that the city council introduced and passed to print in ordinance approving the zoning map amendment requested by the applicant. Adopt a resolution approving the requested use permit with concessions. And staff is recommending adoption of the resolution approving the fee waiver for planning fees, only with the building permit fees to be brought to you at a later date. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions your council might have.
Well, first, let me compliment you on the report itself. It was extremely well done, as is the norm, but once again, let's say, so thank you for the fine report and the good presentation. I'll ask first if there are any council questions. I can't see everyone, Lindsay, so let's start, there you go. Thank you very much. Uh... Senator John? Oh, question for Colin.
Thank you, and I agree. Thank you for the report. We're doing it remotely, but it was great information, so really appreciate that. Two questions. One is, you mentioned that there's a pilot aspect of this project having to do with the streamlining. When will, what is the timeline for that, and when will that come back to the council? Usually when we have a pilot, we have, you know, we assess it as it goes forward. So that's the first question. And then the second question is, we're really thankful to the Planning Commission, as I know they reviewed the project, but how about the design review board? Curious if they have weighed in as well.
So first, regarding the pilot, we have retained a consultant to help us take that to the next step, and that, what that next step is, is evaluating where we might apply objective standards. Right now, we are limited to what we can do with those projects that are categorized as buy-right projects. This is one of those projects, and so we don't have objective standards that we can evaluate such projects. So we're working on creating a list- we're working on creating a list of objective standards. Also, part of this project included evaluating a possibility of an overlay that would allow us to facilitate development of affordable housing within certain areas, and where those areas are, the boundaries of those areas, we haven't really nailed that down yet. So that's coming. We're hoping to have something to you by the end of the year. But, but it's, it's in the works. In terms of the design review board, no, we did not have the design review board weigh in because it's, this is, this is a by right project. There is no, we're only limited to evaluating the development project itself. As a by right project, we don't have the, there were no objective standards to, there is nothing. The, the designer review board would not be able to weigh in, and in a subjective way, which is typically the way the designer review board weighs in.
If I may follow up, thank you for that clarification. I mean, the building looks great with the photo that you showed us. Is there a way to have an informal conversation? And I understand the concept of by right. But we also really trust the DRB and that they help guide these land use decisions that are permanent. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, I know this is a new area. I don't know if Paul can weigh in on that, but is there a way for them to informally give input, or has there been conversation?
You know, we've approached this issue once before, and just the way the law is set up specifically for supportive housing, our hands are tied in terms of our ability to impose discretion on design. So I would, the short answer is no. I do want to mention one thing to, getting back to the timing on the by right review process, we had planned on getting that completed during this summer, not the end of the year. Of course, things are a little lagging behind because of where we are right now, but it was to follow our inclusionary housing ordinance update, which is the higher priority that we have on our list right now. So I just wanted to mention it's a little sooner than the end of the year.
No, thank you. And, and just to be clear, I, I don't have a problem with the design as presented, but as this is a different way of doing business, or these types of projects are different, I wanted to make sure it was really clear among all of us as well as the community. So thank you. No more questions, Mayor.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think Kay raises a good point, and I'm curious, even though we don't have perhaps absolute jurisdiction over the design, that that was presented to us, you know, the first slide, is that, is that approximately what it's going to be looking like, or is it just a fabrication?
Yes, that's intended, that's a representation of what the building would look like, correct? It's a three-D version of, of the building.
Yeah, and just maybe a little bit of a follow-up, and I know that they've got jurisdiction over the design, but also we work closely with Mary Kay Sweeney and Homeward Bound, have great respect for, for Mary Kay and the organization. And I know she's worked closely with the city in the past, and we greatly appreciate that. So I was wondering if it would be possible, maybe, maybe this is not possible, Paul, you can tell me, if we could have some dialogue with Mary Kay, not the Planning Commission in this regard, nor the Design Review Board, but perhaps you could, or whoever Jim might so designate, have a discussion with them in case there's something that obviously sticks out to strike she as being inappropriate. My suspicion is, coming from the community with a good relationship we have with them, they might take that into account. I can see where we don't want to go full design review board, but, you know, some, some observation might be appropriate, but I don't know. I'm asking you, Paul.
Paul, you need to unmute your microphone.
Unmute, I apologize. I'm just trying to get used to this technology here. Still feels a little Brady Bunch-ish, so, but anyway, the, it's something I think we're going to have to discuss with the city attorney, but I have to say this. Homeward Bound and their architect has been very, very open to suggested changes through this process. In fact, the perspective that you, that was presented in the PowerPoint presentation was, the, the design of that project has actually been adjusted over time based on input that we provided them, that we would typically expect the design review board to provide. So I don't know if that increases your comfort level on this, but there had, this has been an iterative process.
Well, it does. I'm glad you've done that, and I'm not suggesting there's more to, to be done, because I do think the building as presented is, is at first, first blush, anyway, is quite attractive. So thank you for being involved in that. Andrew, oh, no, I guess not. Any other, any other comments? Okay. Then I'll ask if there are any public comments with regard to this agenda item.
If you are participating by conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine, and while I wait for participants participants to press star nine, I will also request for public comments to be submitted through the YouTube live chat. Julian? Julian, are you still there? I think that was an error. Is there anyone else on the conference call who would like to speak during public comment on this item? Please press star nine. And I'll give that a second, and while I do, I will go into our public comments submitted through YouTube. Thank you. The first is from Diane Henderson. Please approve the applications and fee waiver requests for Mill Street Center as recommended by staff. Homeward Bound has a proven track record operating the emergency shelter at Mill Street for nearly thirty-five years. Your approval tonight will allow expansion of the center and much-needed supportive housing. If you do not take action to approve this important project this evening, Homeward Bound risks losing funding that will make this project a reality. Thank you. Karen Strollia. Hi, my name is Karen Strollia, and I'm the Director of Downtown Streets Team in the North Bay. We are in support of Homeward Bound's expansion of Mill Street in Centerfell as it serves chronically homeless adults. The proposed dignified space will allow our service, will allow our service partner to better offer thorough services to our shared clientele. Homeward Bound is also proposing adding thirty-two units of supportive housing with twenty-four-seven staffing that is desperately needed to help vulnerable adults experiencing homelessness be housed and stay housed. There is no housing currently like this in our system of care, yet it is consistently a challenge we face in our collective, in our collective coordinated entry efforts. Not only does this meet the city's targets to add affordable housing, but it also allows for better care to our extremely low-income population. Thank you. Thomas Young. Public comment. Hi, my name is Thomas Young. Will similar zoning requirements and concessions be made available to neighboring Mill Street parcels as this is an economic development zone? Jim Garrity. Yes, this project is needed. Lysel Blash. My name is Lysel Blash, and I am representing the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. MEHC is strongly in support of this project. We need to facilitate the creation of this greatly needed affordable housing, especially in these difficult times, when any delay is likely to jeopardize potential funding and/or increase construction costs for this project. In addition, this project will help Centerfell meet its RHNA target for very low-income units, of which only two-point-one percent was complete as of the most recent report. And it does look like there are some phone calls, some people on our conference call who would like to speak. And I will go ahead and unmute them one by one.
This is John Reynolds. I'm a member of Centerfell First, and I'm with this church, a member of Marin Organizing Committee in the San Rafael Canal Neighborhood. Our church is very, very active over the long term in providing meals for people at Mill Street Shelter, and we've had nothing but a good experience with all the people. We sat down at the tables with them and ate with them and shared conversations with them. They can sound good conversations. I've also hung out with a lot of people on the streets and the libraries and, and other public places in the town of Centerfell, and I've had nothing but good, strong conversations with people. There's no disruptive behavior at all from them, and we really appreciate you moving forward with saying yes to having Mill Street redo their shelter and provide thirty-two units of single occupancy housing for persons who happen to be homeless and houseless at one ninety-two Mill Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Howard Schwartz. Many of you know I am a resident of San Rafael, and I have been the lead program manager for Marin's Housing First Efforts. I'm also the project lead for the broad coalition called Opening Doors Marin, which the city, the county, and a broad coalition of Marin organizations support. I'm speaking to you after two stressful weeks working remotely to help set up two emergency programs to shelter homeless individuals and families during our COVID-nineteen crisis. I am deeply aware of how lucky so many of us are to be able to shelter in place. I'm also deeply grateful for the Housing First work our community has done in the last two years, housing two hundred chronically homeless individuals who can now shelter in place and would otherwise be at greater risk of dying in this pandemic. But the impact has extended further. Centerfell businesses have noted the positive impact on the business district, and we have reduced the load on emergency services. I'm speaking to strongly endorse the Mill Street project. Given the challenges of finding appropriate locations in Marin, it makes sense to build up where we already have a footprint and adding thirty-two permanent supportive units on top of the existing shelter with twenty-four-by-seven staffing will have a significant impact on our collective efforts to help the vulnerable homeless adults be housed and stay housed. I and my colleagues are grateful to the city for being a strong partner in our efforts today, and this Mill Street project is very important to us and our goal to reduce chronic homelessness in San Rafael and Marin. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And it appears we have somebody on the line who wishes to speak and is not able to press star nine. So I'm going to unmute this line. Give me one moment. You will all be unmuted, and Nadine, will you please speak up when it is your opportunity?
This is Nadine Erziole. Can you hear me?
I can.
Hey there, this is, okay, perfect. This is Nadine Erziole. I am the General Manager of Health and Marine Service. It's a family business at six nineteen Canal Street. So the back of our property goes against the Mill Street property, and we are definitely in support of a community effort such as this, but we do have a few reservations that we do hope that the city does take into perspective. We do during the days when the people are not in the shelter have people loitering and hiding their drugs in our property, and when I try to confront them friendly, they tend to get a little upset, and I usually have to call the Centerfell Police Department because I've been threatened to have my tires slashed and threatened with a knife. So as much as I am very much a big proponent of having this different shelter, I do want to make sure that the business properties are protected as well, because it's not only for my protection, my employee protection, my customers' protection. We want to make sure that we have a safe environment for everybody so that there's some repercussions for people who are repeat offenders. For instance, we've had a couple people, and it's a couple people, it's not everybody, but there's those repeat offenders who are constantly having to be called through the police, and they are the people who keep causing the problems. So there needs to be some repercussions for the people who are constantly causing the problems coming from that shelter.
Thank you. Did you, did someone just receive a notification that I've unmuted them? Phone number ending in one-zero. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. It's your opportunity to provide public comment for two minutes.
Thank you. This is Pat Langley, a member of MOC and the Centerfell residents. And the Marin Organizing Committee is fully in support of this project. According to our latest point-in-time count, Marin County was the only county in the Bay Area to experience a drop in homelessness. And this happened as a result of a cooperative response by the agency serving those on the streets, of which Homeward Bound was a key organization in this Housing First Plan. The expansion of Mill Street is a critical need in our community. It's the right plan for the location where Homeward Bound has provided life-saving services for over thirty years. We know the community is involved through its meal program and financial support. The unknowns of the pandemic at this time are many. However, the need for community to support one another has been a paramount lesson learned. So we would fully support this project, and we urge you to approve, to approve all of the amendments and use permits and whatever it takes to make this project come on. Thank you. Hello?
Hello.
This is Mary Kay Sweeney.
Go right ahead.
Am I? Thank you. We deeply appreciate the support of staff as we get this project going forward. It's been an important effort on all of our parts to really work together to make this the most important project that we have to do in the county or in the city right now. This is critical, a critical need, as you all know, and it's only going to get more critical as this time goes on. So we appreciate so much your support and hope that you all pass on these resolutions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on our conference call line that wishes to provide public comments? Okay. I'm going to mute everyone.
You are muted.
We do have one more public comment through YouTube, and it's again from Thomas Young, public comment question. Will SRPD be available and responsive to new issues in the area? I have experienced several break-ins, parking problems, and safety-related issues recently. And that concludes public comment.
We'll close public comments and certainly thank, thank everyone for the input. There were a couple of questions that came up. I don't know if that is Paul or Jim, but one with regard to location and perhaps some, some safety-related questions. Would one of you care to expand on that?
Well, I could start, Mayor. I want to touch on the question that someone had regarding by right development, and particularly how or if this is going to apply elsewhere in this neighborhood. And I mentioned that this is a pilot. In order for this project to qualify for this by right development that you're considering this evening, the property has to be zoning-ready, meaning it has to be in a zoning district that allows for residential use, which is the reason for the general plan amendment, the rezoning. Where we are targeting this by right development allowance is in the zoning district that is proposed for the site, which is applied broadly throughout the canal neighborhood, and then it is also applied in several other neighborhoods in San Rafael. We're not, we haven't decided yet whether or not it's going to apply broadly throughout the entire city, or we will recommend that in every area that's zoned HR1, but that's something that we're going to be closely looking at. But yes, the process would be likely afforded to other properties in this neighborhood that share that same zoning. I know that there was a question regarding their operations, particularly handling loitering, and this may be something, Ally, I don't know if you can mention, I do know in the original use permit, we had some conditions regarding loitering, and that's part of the performance standards, and it may be something that we might want Mary Kay Sweeney to respond to as well.
Yeah, so I can add that the applicant is required to submit a site management plan that includes how they will handle security, how they will handle site maintenance. So that'll be part of their So that'll be part of their requirement to have ongoing site management. One of the conversations I've had with the applicant, with Mary Kay Sweeney and Paul Fordham, is that with this 24-hour operation now, they will have more staff on site more regularly. And so the amount of staffing on site will improve their ability to monitor the site more regularly. And so the applicant is aware that they're going to have to submit a site management plan that includes security, that includes site maintenance. And yeah, I mean, if there's any, if there's a way to get Mary Kay Sweeney back on the phone just to kind of get her input as well, I think that would be a good approach.
Lindsay, I don't know if that's possible or not. Any guidance here?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was just speaking with my colleague regarding the public comment. Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, the question is directed to Mary Kay Sweeney with regard to some of the provisions that are within the approval, assuming it's granted, what they are with regard to some of the, I'll call them all-encompassing, safety issues.
Yeah, Mary, if you're still on the line, it looks like you did raise your hand. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Is that Mary?
Yes, it is. Thank you so much. We're having a little bit of technical difficulty here.
Yeah, we accidentally muted you. We're sorry about that.
So anyway, just so you know that we are fully aware of the kinds of issues you are bringing up, and our use permit and performance standards will be really updated to really reflect the kind of needs for this population. With additional 24-hour staffing, I think we'll be covering all of the issues that you're talking about right now, and the concerns will be a later.
Okay, anything further to add on that point? In which case, let's turn to council members for their comments, questions, observations. Turning with Vice Mayor Collin.
Thank you. This project has been discussed for, I think, years. Mary Kay can confirm that, but I think it's been years. As we all recognize that the emergency shelter is a crucial part of our safety net. In addition, the coordinated entry system really requires additional housing for our chronically homeless. And as Pat Langley said, our numbers have gone down in Marin County because we haven't been able to house chronically homeless folks. So in order to continue to do that work, this project will further those objectives and have very much a positive impact on San Rafael. So I'm thrilled that we're able to discuss it, even though it's remote, and we can't all high-five each other in person. But I look forward to hearing what my colleagues say and offering my support and motion when the time is appropriate.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bushy.
I too am absolutely delighted to be able to support this project. On two sort of loose ends that I think we can resolve on an informal basis due to the extraordinary history of this organization in our community and extraordinary leadership that this organization has. It would be nice if the Homeward Bound would engage in an informal conversation with the DRB to see if they have any reasonable and feasible and economically viable improvements that they could suggest to the design of the building. I think that that would be a win-win for everyone. I would also like to see Homeward Bound commit informally to ensuring that during the construction period, they will make arrangements for all of the residents that would otherwise be housed at the Mill Street site to find others, other arrangements, other sites where they could receive services. So that during the fairly long construction period, I understand it's to be close to a year, that service will continue without missing a beat. But again, because of the really outstanding character of this organization, I think that we can rely on Paul and the informal process to resolve these two issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Councilmember Gamblin, any comments?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This has been a project that we've been talking about for a number of years, and I'm so happy to see it finally coming to fruition. Fully supportive of the project as it's submitted. I'm glad that we were able to get up to get those 32 units. I know initially there was some talk about maybe a few less units, but I'm glad that we're able to find a way to get up to the 32 units, which I think is sorely needed in our community. I will make note just of the, on the design piece, as submitted in the presentation, I think most of us are fine with that. But I would also point to Homeward Bound's project in Novato and the design that they used there. And I don't know if it had to go through the same process or if it was by right, but they did a very nice job and created a very nice building. So my concerns about something that is going to not be aesthetically pleasing are minimized based upon their previous interactions with other cities locally. So they've done a great job in Novato, and I know they're building more up there. And I think that they'll do a great job here. So it has my full support. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember McCullough.
I just want to say I concur with the comments made by my colleagues on the council. This is a project that's been a long time coming. And I think Homeward Bound as an organization and Mary Kay Sweeney as its executive director are both terrific. And I appreciate the stewardship they've shown to bring this project close to fruition. I'm excited that we're in a position to finally approve this later at the appropriate time. I wouldn't mind if Paul and your team, if you came back with better guidance on if we provide planning fee waivers and if we provide later on building permit waivers, fee waivers. What are the criteria for those? I can't think of a more worthwhile project than this one to qualify for a waiver, but waivers can end up on a slippery slope. So it would be good to have criteria that guide us in the future. But that's for another time, another place. I very much support this project as presented.
You could unmute your microphone, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I thought I did that. I said I am very much supportive of the project as well. I do have one question that's within the staff report, which is on page eight. Under building permit fees, it says item two. The applicant has indicated that they will be making a funding request of the city's Affordable Funding Trust, provide a gap in the funding for their project. The staff is actually working with the applicant to identify the state and federal funding opportunities, which if successfully rewarded, would change the gap in the funding request from the applicant. What is the funding gap at this point? Is that realistic?
Well, at this point, I believe the request is for $1.5 million from the trust fund. Is that correct, Allie?
Yes, that's correct. Right now, the request is 1.5. I don't have the gap that they're trying to meet in front of me, but they have a number of different funding sources that they're seeking funding from. And with the funding sources that they have, and we have members on our staff that are really great about finding funding sources and trying to align them with the correct housing projects. And so we have that person working with Homeward Bound to try to identify other forms of funding that could, that could allow them to reduce that gap and then possibly use our affordable housing fund for other projects as well. So we're working. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we're working with our team members to try to minimize, reduce that gap.
Yeah, I hope, and I would presume many of our comments will help if, if anything, in support of their filling that gap. I was particularly struck by Howard Schwartz's comments. He's always very articulate and to the point. I appreciate his comments. I'm in favor of this for, this project for four reasons. First, as Andrew McCullough mentioned, highest regard for Mary Kay Sweeney as the executive director. She does outstanding work representing Homeward Bound. I've got great trust in Mary Kay and obviously the organization as well. Second, I heard few, received few, not none, but a few negative comments. And for projects such as this, you might expect more, just the nature of the business. But very few, and I think they were all adequately addressed. Three, high regard for the Planning Commission. This obviously is past the Planning Commission. Do consideration to all of the impacts that were addressed. And I'm most pleased that they came to the conclusion that they're in favor after considering those points. And then four, certainly we all know that we need, as a community, such housing, such facilities for homeless, and those are slightly disadvantaged. And so I'm in favor of such a project to fill that gap that we now have. And I would suggest many cities have the gap, and we're appreciative of an attempt to fill at least part of that shortfall. So I'm in favor of the project as well. Mr. City Attorney, any comments we should take in consideration before we go to vote?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. With that, we have, oh, four, perhaps five. Yes, we have five motions. We'll take each of them separately. So we'll queue up for five motions in second, starting with Vice Mayor Collin, who volunteered, I believe, during her discourse.
I actually really meant to volunteer, Mary Beth, so sorry.
She stuck it out last time.
Oh, you got it. I move that we adopt the resolution of the international, oh my God, sorry. The initial study mitigated negative declaration approving a mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
And is there a second?
I will second if Councilmember Bushy does not wish to.
She's done her part already. It moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
My matter carries 5-0. Move on to the next resolution, number two.
Make a motion that we pass the resolution approving a general plan map amendment to change the existing light industrial office land use designation of the site to high-density residential land use designation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Come on now.
Second.
Thank you, John. Moving to second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
My matter carries 5-0, third item.
I move that we pass ordinance to print of the consideration approving a zoning map amendment to modify the existing Canal Core Industrial Office zoning classification of the site at 190 Mill Street to high-density residential zoning classification.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
My matter carries 5-0, fourth item.
Make a motion that we pass the resolution approving the use permit for a new emergency shelter to replace existing shelter to be demolished in consideration of concessions to exceed 60% maximum lot coverage and 36% maximum building height for HR1 district.
Second.
Moving to second roll call.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
My matter also carries 5-0. That's the standard of the items. So this matter passes with glowing, glowing comments and much appreciated.
I have, there's one more. There's one more.
Oh, there is?
Yep.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, number five.
Okay, you ready? Yeah. I move that we pass the resolution approving a fee waiver for the planning application fees associated with the project.
And?
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Aye. Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
My matter carries, and once again, I guess, each of the items have passed. And we're looking forward to this project, certainly as expressed so well by the council members, and thanks for doing so. With that, we'll turn to council members' reports, request future agenda items. Are there any? Let's see, no, 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 no. I'll just, I'll just, oh, I'm sorry.
If I may, after council member reports, there were a couple of comments.
We're not quite through council members' reports yet.
Correct. After this is done, I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to go ahead and read a couple of more comments that were received by YouTube for open time, just because everyone's getting used to this process. We did receive three additional comments right at the close of open time walking into the consent calendar.
No, we closed that item. We'll take them next time if they wish.
Okay.
Items, I'll just add a couple. I mentioned earlier that last Friday, brought together four, including myself, individuals to talk about COVID-19 and its impact on the community and how we're responding to that. I was pretty pleased with the comments. It does feel to me like the county has stepped up and done a considerable amount to address this issue in a reasonable manner. I think their order is pretty strict, but I think it's also necessary. And I think that they've done a good job combining with other counties, five other counties within the Bay Area, to give us good advice and recommendations on how we should conduct ourselves. I was pleased with the hospitals, specifically Pat Kendall, who we all know and I certainly trust, I think we all do, with regard to reassessments to where we stand. Obviously, it's a moving target, but I felt comfortable. You might watch the Zoom if you wish, but I felt comfortable with her response to overall, how do we, how do we stand at this point in time? No guarantees, because things change on a daily basis. But nevertheless, felt we were in pretty good stead. And Jim did an outstanding job of, I think, assuring us in the community as to where we are with regard to communities, city services that we provide, particularly police and fire. That's always on people's minds during this sort of an event. And I think Jim did an outstanding job of summarizing the fact that we are, as a city, continuing to operate, operate effectively. And certainly, I feel comfortable that we're in the right place. It's not nearly as efficient, a little awkward, but we're conducting business as our community expects. I did talk a little bit about the Small Business Relief Fund. We raised about $200,000 so far. We've really just gotten started and going to pursue that later this week, trying to raise some additional funds. Vice Mayor Collins has volunteered to serve on this, this effort as well, and so thanks for doing so. So you'll be hearing perhaps more about that, because I am concerned about many small businesses and how they will fare, even with the $350 billion, which again, sounds like a lot of money, but when you start giving it up, probably not, not so much. And I know that some of our businesses, if not all, are going to have a struggle during this difficult period for an undetermined length of time. That's one part of the hardship. And who knows how efficient the distribution will be. John, I'd like to talk to you later. I heard today, I don't know if it's fact or not, because you probably are pretty first on it, that Wells Fargo was not servicing the requests. So I'd be curious about that. And several other banks, quite frankly, not just Wells Fargo, but since you work for Wells Fargo, I'd be interested in some advice on that, that item, because Wells Fargo obviously is a major player. And I think most businesses have to go through their bank, so I don't know how that works if they aren't able to do so. Each Friday, I plan to address questions that come up with regard to, from our community, with regard to how they are either to access funds, how are they to respond, how are they to deal with their many issues. But the county, as Jim alluded to earlier, addressed frequently asked questions. I'm going to go through those, see which one I think are most pertinent, and select some of those, as well as a dozen or so that I've received thus far. So this is an interesting time for all of us, and I think everyone did well tonight. Editorial comment, if you will, but thanks for participating. This means it's a little more awkward. We each had our little trips. I know I did with the mute. But thanks for putting up with us getting through tonight. And we covered the matter, and that's the important thing. So thanks for doing so. And with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.